Second means order tonight. We are gonna have a quick meeting tonight, but we're gonna have an effective meeting tonight. For Thursday seventeen, oh that was last time. This is Thursday, August thirty first. Okay, I have, first of all, I have some minutes, Jim.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three as amended.
I'll second those. Jim, any discussion on those? I thought the few changes were well accepted. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the first non-public meeting minutes of August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second just the motion. And for the, for the record, they were concerning, the subject was, for session was for.
Potential land.
Potential land.
Purchase.
Any discussion on that?
Nope.
Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll make a motion for the second non-public on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. That was regarding the vacancy of.
No, welfare?
Welfare director, as I'm saying.
No, it was a welfare lien.
Welfare lien, correct.
Not this lien.
No, different lien.
Any discussion on those minutes, Jim?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now for the last set, I'll make a motion to approve the last set of non-public minutes for Thursday, August seventeenth.
The third set.
Third set, regarding the welfare director.
I'll second. Dr. Justin.
Second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on those, Jim?
Nope.
And Dave, I understand you have some news for us tonight?
I think I do.
Recommendations, thank you. I'm gonna pass it on if it's used as a tab. Okay.
Public comment?
Yes. Christine, you're on the agenda, so.
Yes.
You're gonna be right next, okay. Fred, anything for public comment?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment, bring it back to the board, and I'm gonna write down the town business. Christine, you're on the agenda, you're on the agenda first up.
Awesome. Christine Flank with the Rec Committee, and we've had two meetings this year. The next one is actually going to be next Tuesday, the fifth, at six thirty. And in order to prepare, we've been talking about starting an after-school kindergarten soccer program.
Okay.
One day a week, and then per my schedule, we'll work on Wednesdays. So we'll do that for about, you know, seven weeks or so, just to get something started in Dunbarin. Me with my kids participated in Bo, it didn't work. It was literally after school in Bo, and I had to leave Dunbarin to get to Bo, and we lost twenty minutes, so.
So, yeah.
So I was like, we're not, just let's do one here.
Where, where period will we be?
Um, we'd be right at D E S.
Okay. And you're going to the school on that?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yep, and the after-school program's perfectly fine, they just said, let us know when we're gonna be here, and we're all, everyone's all good to go.
Okay, great. Kudos for getting that going.
Yeah, we're, we're excited, and I got a lot of parents that are like, well, happy we corralled some children for you and, and volunteer, so it was good. Uh, we're getting ready for basketball, that will start mid-October, and we'll go all the way up through February, well, February, March of next year. Um, that program's doing well, and the change that we did make for this upcoming season is be kindergarten through sixth grade.
Okay.
We had.
So cover all, all the grades of the.
It would cover everyone at D E S. Um, we had two meetings prior to, to discuss the changes, invited everyone for comment, recognizing that seventh, eighth, and nine through twelve would play in Bo.
Sure.
It makes sense as they move towards that direction.
Okay.
Other items, we're getting ready for Halloween, as bizarre as it seems, October thirty-first. Uh, discussion was to, I think the ser- the trick-or-treating has always been four to eight, and we've talked about maybe making it five to eight. Um, not sure who gets to pick those hours.
The chief, you work with the chief, so if you're coordinating something, then by all means, we'll get.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I can actually send you his email and L C C U so that you guys can converse.
Sometimes you do a lot of activities in the garden club, there's a lot of activities on, on a comment too.
Yeah, they'll wanna get involved with it as well.
Yes. Yep, so we're all working together.
Okay.
Oh, perfect.
Partly why I'm also here, 'cause they would like to continue doing the pumpkins on the steps for the library, they did it for the first time last year, and was hoping to have permission to do it again for this year.
Which steps do they do that?
On the library.
On that side, the roadside.
In the front side, yeah.
Yeah.
And they, what, all the kids take pumpkins home, they cut it, and when it's all done, they bring it in.
Yeah.
And set it up, and then.
And how long does it stay there?
Just until the day after, right?
Yeah.
And then they bring it to a pet, um, pig farm or someplace where somebody.
Is the library not open?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all the time.
My concern is the fire egress out the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's only there for the day of.
Yeah.
It worked out well last year, I think she came before the ward to get the approval, and it worked out well.
As long as the library is not open, I'm fine with it. If, if it is, we just need to have a three-foot hallway.
Okay.
Space, yeah, okay.
I'll double-check what I think that you guys said. So you're hoping for five to eight instead of the four to eight?
Yes.
Okay.
I just do, I just needed coordination with police department, and then we have to announce it publicly.
Yeah, awesome.
And I think, I think it would be wise, another place we do it on the bulletin board, we can put on a, on a, on a screen.
Yeah, we always post.
At the school, at the school too.
Yep.
Because, you know, Halloween is for that teddy bear and those.
It's for that nature.
Yes, and so the.
Four o'clock felt very rushed trying to get out of school or whatever, so we're thinking maybe to help with that, with the, starting at five might give a little bit more time.
Very good.
Um, and then holiday, uh, looking at December ninth, still doing, um, permission to still do lights around the tree trunks is something that, uh, has come up as well as still doing the tree lighting on the, I call it a bandstand, pavilion?
Right. It's a fan stand.
The only, only thing the, we've had any controversy, the garden club likes to have it go forever after the holidays.
Oh, no, yeah.
And things, we're trying to come up with a reasonable time, I'm looking at maybe, all the lights are off by January fifteenth, Jim.
Yeah, I think that's what we do.
Is that what we did last year?
Yep.
First or fifteenth or something.
So is that something you're working with the garden club as well?
Yep.
Just keep the fifteenth in mind.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, I definitely did that.
Bring up the cords on the ground to be a bright color if you talk.
Yes, um, any cords on the ground, I would, I, even if you gotta put yellow tape on them.
You can see.
Because we had, we did have one person trip on it last year.
Okay.
And, um, we don't need a lawsuit for the town.
Understandable.
Yeah, 'cause I think they put it out just before Thanksgiving, correct? Is that still planned?
But it's gonna be, if it's on the ninth, if you can do it.
Well, they'll set it up when the weather's permitting, and then they'll turn it on on the ninth, so that they're ready to go.
And I think is last year, if there's snow in the ground, they don't have to go dig in the snow to pull the wires back up.
Right.
But I had it off, I think on the fifteenth. And then as soon as it, as soon as reasonably permissible weather-wise, you can pull the wires up.
Okay, super. Yeah, that's easily.
Yeah, that's what they did last year.
Yeah, I think they left them on, there was, there was some issues with weather.
Yes, and I think they had some timers that were got funky, so.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, Rec is gonna partner with the Dunbarin P T O for that event to kinda do a cross event.
That's fantastic.
So that, we're hoping to have some carriage rides go from the school to the green.
I include the garden club in that too, I think all three, yes.
Yes, yes, yep.
Good, good.
Yeah, garden clubs, they don't wanna run the whole darn thing, but they said, if you do that, and then we will support you, perfect, I said, fine.
We have, I think we, we can, no issues with that at all, yeah.
That's really nice to hear, it really is.
You bring, you brought back some, uh, some life to the committee, thank you.
Sure, sure.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's everything that I have.
I'm gonna say thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for what you're doing, and I guess you brought life back to me, I'm getting, it was getting kinda old to have one trip to Boston, a shopping trip for like Golf Town.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so you know there is, there are funding, so if you find that some of the extension cords or the lights are kind of failing.
Yeah.
Then there's some funding in the lines, in the budget, and then, I know that.
And as.
Garden club's been donating some in the past.
And as we go into the winter, just remember, budget season is coming, so just have your budget delineated. We were kinda like conservative last year, not knowing which way we were going.
Yeah.
But it sounds like you have some good programs, and we wanna keep good programs going.
Perfect.
And so you gotta pick, pick the winners, let the losers go by.
I think we did increase one of their lines a little bit, so.
Yeah, we did, a little bit, but the thing is, we didn't do it dramatically.
Yeah, fair.
Yeah.
Awesome, okay. Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Too easy, right?
No, it's good.
No, it's, no, it's good, it's the fact we're communicating.
Yeah.
And the thing is, I, there's some shortcomings, we had an old home day with lack of communications in some areas, but the key to making anything successful is we communicate.
Yeah.
And we're all on the same sheet.
Absolutely.
Okay, bye.
Great, thank you, keep up the good job.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, request from Dunbarin Congressional Church to hold memorial reception for Pamela Scoop, Sunday, September twenty-fifth. Cut it.
Where is this? Doesn't say where.
It's the application, it's right there, the reservation form, is it marked with number two on the agenda?
Okay.
Yeah, it says the congregation church, holding memorial up there.
Get to it.
So she did meet with me this week so that we could go upstairs to, so that she would have a better idea of what is available up there. Um, she said that the food that they're looking for is finger food, nothing that, um, requires any type of.
Cooking.
Type of cooking or any kind. They said that we will have a electric pot for coffee, and then iced tea and lemonade, and dispensers, and, um, they're asking the people, um, through the church to bring, uh, their finger foods and snacks for the service.
That's nice, okay.
Ten AM to five PM?
Well, this is set up, the church service is at one.
Oh, ten to six AM.
The, uh, reservation, or the service at the, um, town hall would start at two, after the church, and then they would need, uh, time to clean up.
Two to four.
So one PM is church.
Church is, yep, and then two PM is the ser- as they.
May I understand they can use the water?
Yep, the sign is up there, yep.
It could make it boil, boiling coffee, does that make it any better?
I'll remind her of that, but thank you for pointing out.
That's why when you said coffee and all that, I'm like, pretty washing.
Well, you ever go to a restaurant, and the thing is, you ask for ice water, and all you taste is chlorine in the water.
Oh, yeah, especially when you live in the country, it's, you really notice.
You notice it right off.
Well, I'm gonna go and say, you know, this is exactly one of those uses we talked about. You know, we have predominant resident in town, and church wants to use it, I, I have no, for more reception, I have no issue with this, I don't.
And this, this will be a test, we have in the past, the church uses parking lot for parking on a Sunday.
Yeah, I'm sure half the people park there and.
Yep, and this will be a test to see how well things go.
Good. And since she's met, since she's met with you, so you, anything in the future?
I've already assigned her a key, passcode, that she knows to pick up the key here, and then she's willing to either A, deliver it on Monday, or put it through the mail slot like we discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and item three, first quote received in Capital Well, second quote will be available next week. October, uh, we got a Capital Well quote here. David, there's a couple quotes I understand.
Yeah, don't mention any prices, please.
No, 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 I understood. Um, I just, I'm gonna call it a work in progress, we can look at it, but just don't talk about it at this point because, uh, we have competitive quotes coming in.
They did provide me with three quotes, one was for the whole house, one was for, um, uh, just the arsenic treatment, and then the other one was the point of.
Service.
Service for the.
Bubblers.
Bubblers, yes.
Okay. And that's what, that's what you wanted to see, Dave, too.
Yeah, looks like, uh.
And the prices I saw were reasonable, and I just hope the other competitive, we're competitive, we stay competitive.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Looks like four different quotes, huh?
It's actually three. The, uh, some of it might be the service part, but, uh.
Okay.
I wrote them on the top.
You'll send them to us electronic, please?
I can do that, yeah, that'll be a lot easier.
So we can read through them a little bit, you know?
Working progress though, we just need the other quotes when, when we can discuss them, of course. Okay, I'm gonna go to mailbox, first thing to mailbox. Now, we got a grant from, uh, Guardian Angel Devices, eleven hundred sixty-six dollars of, uh, equipment. Specifically includes, uh, personal lighting devices and jar clip magnetic mounts. And these are for keeping the spirit of Blues mission of enhancing officer safety and vitality of the meeting and safety equipment and training needs. Grants intended for necessary equipment for your officers to be protected from threats while serving community. So kudos to a grant master for the chief. And just for the public's record, uh, Chief Romanard, before his Sergeant Romanard, I call him a grant master because he's been a master of, when his funds are be found, he'll find them and put them to use for us. Sometimes they're matching, but you can't beat matching grants when they're for, the equipment is expensive, so kudos to the chief. All right, he's got a couple, uh, speaking of the chief, he's got a couple events coming up. Uh, gentlemen, we have, remember, we hired Officer Philbrook, he went to the academy, he'll be graduating Friday, September twenty-ninth, we're all invited, at six PM. The second item is, uh, Monday, October second, six PM, upstairs, he was gonna be presenting some awards and recognition, and, uh, we, we're all invited to both occasions, if you so.
Yeah, I did tell him, I definitely wanted to at least try and make the.
So I plan to attend to the ceremony.
Yeah.
I probably wanna go to graduation.
I think the academy is at the academy, right?
Yes.
So you're gonna have to travel.
I'll probably, I, I, I've been to one in the past, I might go to, I, I'll, I'll, I'll show up there, so.
Is that in Manchester, the academy?
Uh, it's, it's north of here.
Concord, Concord.
Concord, okay.
Yeah, it's north of here. Okay, moving on. Rather than read this email, I'm gonna let the gentleman speak for himself.
No, 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 I mean, read the, read the summary on your mailbox thing, and then Dave will probably wanna take the email with him.
Okay, this is from, uh, from Fred regarding the perm, perm amputations of the town line between Ware and Dunbarin. And it's gonna be October seventh at one PM.
Yeah, so Fred was nice enough to outline some of the history for some of the newcomers, trying to get people, uh, interested and familiar with the whole process. He really laid out a lot of information there, and, um.
Who put that on the website, just a link on the website, just if someone wanna read it, they could read that.
Can I shut the camera off before we talk?
No, not at all, not at all. I love your history, thank you.
Yeah, well, nobody else up out of the history over there.
That's great. And I understand, uh, one of the second will be joining you?
Yep.
Yep.
Very good, Dave. Jessica, can you email that to us, Liam?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
I think I already have.
Also, right now, Jeff Trexler might be going, if he's available.
Okay.
Yeah, I told Fred, few of us know the bounds, I think it'd be better off, it'd be, I don't want it to be like when, you know, the, um, the father's taking care of this cemetery all left and.
That's, that's what, now.
Nobody knew where anything was.
If I'm available, I wouldn't mind going, but.
Okay.
I'll let you know when it gets closer.
Yeah, we'll remind you too.
Okay, uh, are you ready for some good news? Is the public ready for some good news? The environmental, Department of Environmental Services, uh, regard, uh, reported back to us about milfoil in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three. No milfoil found, therefore no work needed. That's a, that's a win-win.
So we've gone on, does it hear four now?
Right. And the thing is, uh, we've been, we funded it heavy several years back, but we've been lowering the amount of funds, because it doesn't require it, which is great, it's a win.
And we don't, we end up not using it, so we don't receive the grant side, but we also don't expend the capital reserve side.
Right, but it's still important to stay a part of the grant process.
That's right, yep, and I just recently applied for the twenty twenty-four, um, pre-grant application, so that's already been mailed out.
Right. Right. Okay, that's good news. All right, um, this is regarding the, um, the telephone pole relocation on Kelsey Road. Ed Rogers has been working with our surveyor, they, they uncovered, Ed Rogers acknowledged there may have been some errors made. Uh, was talking about maybe several inches, but he's working with them, six to twelve inches plus or minus, so he's working with our surveyors to make sure everything is delineated correctly. And, um, I just, remember when I started, when this started, I just wanted it set before the snow flies, and we're getting close. And I just, I just, I would ask you to lean this, talk to, uh, keep the road agent abreast of what's going on.
He's already got a copy of the email, but also, um, I have been.
He has the email there.
I have been talking.
It's on, it's on the line.
Oh, you wanna send it all to all of us?
She already did, she already did.
No, the email?
Yeah.
No, I only sent it to you and the, and his attorney.
Okay.
Cause that came from Ed Rogers.
Okay.
So send it to all of us so we can read it at least.
Okay.
It's pretty, it's pretty, it's pretty nice that.
I was gonna say it's right there, you can.
There's, there's more than one, though, it's going back and forth. But the thing is, I think it'd be worthwhile to have it all.
Yeah, then we just read it and see.
But it's, it's what's nice, it's, uh, I find Ed Rogers a true gentleman, uh, he's working with, uh, our surveyors.
With Dan, Lon.
And he, he's acknowledging that he's not perfect, and he's willing to correct the issues, and, uh, so I, I call it truly a professional.
Well, I have to, we have to applaud, um, the, our surveyor, because he came up with these, this information, and then after reviewing the other data that he was told he should have been using, he found that he wasn't correct, and there were errors on the other side, so as long as they get it fixed.
Which is all good.
Yeah, as they get it fixed.
Okay, but I don't wanna wait till December.
No, it's staying on top of them and trying to get it.
Yeah, so I'm actually, I'm gonna ask you to stay on top of both of them.
I have, and Dawn is aware.
Have we heard any more? It says this will not affect placement of new utility pole, but have we heard any more about them pulling the pole out?
No, nothing at all, nothing came, nobody is even aware of why that occurred. I think it was a sub that was sent out there, and there was a miscommunication of Unitil hiring the sub who wasn't prepared or aware that it was still not, um.
As soon as we get this R and L between those two surveyors.
Donna, I'm keeping Dawn and the, and the road agent.
Pole, pole gets sent within, hopefully soon, after they're after.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna, uh, that's the mailbox item, I'm gonna open up a public comment again. Fred, anything for the group?
No.
Anything for the group, anyway? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment, I'm gonna take it to the town administrator.
Um, I only have keys for the town, for the school entrance, school street entrance have been fixed, and there were a couple that, um, didn't work, but the remainder has been tested and they're okay. Still waiting to get the bathroom.
Spring hinges.
Yeah, they're not done yet.
Yeah, I was just telling them, spring hinges.
Spring hinges, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you, we're still, that's still work in progress?
Um, the spring hinges are on order, I think they do into us next week.
Oh, okay, all right, and that's all I had.
No, you got one other issue over there.
Well, I know.
Painting on the vans.
Right, but that's on a punch list, that, um, so they'll get all of the remainder done at the same time.
Okay.
Okay, good to know.
And, uh, just, uh.
Next week?
Just let, let us know that you passed the, the bill for the electrical, uh, fix to the, uh.
Oh, um, I received the, it's like a two-hundred-dollar electrical bill for the pole repair, and forwarded it to, um, to coin.
For.
Because, for billing to see if they're gonna pick up the cost, because it was part of the damage when they pulled up the wire.
No, the head.
Yeah.
In there was defective, had nothing to do with the damage.
Well, they pulled up the wire that pulled the whole housing unit out of the ground.
No, the wire broke under the ground.
Yeah.
Okay, so then they put a piece of pipe in their sleeve, so the new wire could go through the sleeve, and then they paved over it, and then they put the wire in that sleeve after when the electric company came back. But the problem, if you read with a fix on it, was that inside of the head there, it was nothing to do with pulling on it.
It was the eye that had been damaged, so I don't know.
Yeah, so I don't think that has anything to do with that.
But the thing is, the question was, before the construction, did it work?
Yeah, it was working fine before the construction.
So it just doesn't just break overnight, there was, must have been something going, it, it, I'm not worried about it, it's one of the always.
I'm not worried about it either.
If they pay for it.
If you look at that fixture, it was not a new-looking fixture.
Understood, understood.
Well, they didn't change out the fixture, they changed out the eye that was cracked off the side of the.
Well, we see what, I, I think we should, we should let it go and see what happens. I think is, uh, second thing is, let it go. Okay, thank you, Liam.
So again, if Chicoine comes back and says it wasn't part of the damage, then just pay for it, out of the.
Yeah, I don't think it's a big deal. Um, what I'm more concerned about is getting that taken care of, uh, with the lift and the painting, cause somebody's gonna go up on a very tall ladder, they need a lift here to paint that.
Yeah.
You're talking about the, I know these evenings.
I don't wanna go, we went past last winter waiting for it to be done, so.
That requires, that's, that's an expense they're gonna have to pick up.
Yeah, it's a hundred or two-hundred dollars to rent one, things for half a day and go paint it.
And would, that's part of the punch list for Chicoine?
Yeah, because remember, we accepted their addendum to put the eight, the, um, air handle, which was, I think, like fifty-eight thousand.
And you paid for that, yeah. And the thing is, it's beautiful maintenance now, they should be doing it.
Um, did Serret, um, tell us where the pipe was, that's the only.
No, he didn't, but both quotes, uh, found the access.
So we're not sorry with that.
Yeah, I can even, I can even let her know that we're all set that they found the little.
Probably don't have to let her know, she didn't reach out to us, right?
No, she did not, no, no response, but she might have been on vacation, I don't know.
Anything else, Liam?
No, that's it.
Okay, Justin to you.
No, I'm.
Dave, to you, anything else?
Um, I did reach out to the demo guy about taking the brick down, I wanna follow up on the garage doors for.
Yes.
I'm not sure if that second supplier of doors had reached out to John, I'll check with him this week. So I wanna try and get that focused for the next couple of weeks, get that wrapped up.
And the thing is, if they can't do the work, or it takes a backlog order, let's get the, get a commitment to it.
No, I think this will be done this week, yeah. The demo guy has no issue doing it right away. The door guy said the doors were available, the first one, so we're just getting a second number on them.
I, somewhere in, somewhere in Southern Hampshire, I just, I was looking at John the other day, someone had a fire engine, they were selling at an auction, the starting bid was one, was that go a dollar?
I'm buying one. Cheaping up my insurance.
But I was just, I was just flapping ass that someone was selling a fire engine for a dollar, and I'm looking, I'm saying, boy, that looks pretty nice, it's, it's like, it's not rusted, it's, it's new, it looks like a modern fire engine. So, I don't know. John has a, has a, for the record, John is, keeps his eye open for fire engines from Connecticut. Connecticut has a big turnover of fire engines, because they're, it's a, they're very wealthy communities, and they turn over fire engines, which we would hang on for ten, twenty years, and they would turn them over three years. So he's always got an eye on for a good piece of equipment. Anything else, Dave?
Nope, that's it for me.
Okay, um. I just, uh, I talked to the chief of police, he's just staying busy, he said, uh, first day of school this year went, went well. Um, there's a lot of cars there, but overall, no issues.
I saw a lot of empty buses, a lot of cars.
No, I just.
I saw.
But it was not chaotic over here at all when I drove by.
Two complaints to me already about, uh, the school, the, the decreasing busing to Tucker Hill Road, in the sense that, um, they say it's, they don't have enough buses, they dropped the bus. This is coming from Golf Town, so I, I reckon, I advised at least one of the residents to make direct complaints, concern to the school board. Problem is, they got a six-year-old little girl who's gotta go to kindergarten, come home from kindergarten, and cross thirteen in the middle of a rush hour, and the thing is, while the police department are over there, they help people who have school buses, no, there's no crosswalk, there's nothing out here, and the thing is, what do people do on the way to work? They put pedal to the metal. And the thing is, I can't see a six-year-old crossing thirteen during rush hour.
When they let them off the bus, the lights stay flashing until a kid crosses.
Right, but, but not, there's no light here, there's nothing here.
No, the bus stays there until.
There's no bus in Tucker Hills, what are you saying?
There's no bus.
No, but the bus is dropping them off right here on thirteen.
No, 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 they gotta walk from the school all the way down.
Oh, so now you're getting dropped off?
No.
All right, I think there's a minimum of a mile to the school before you will qualify for pickup.
But they were getting picked up before.
Yes. And the thing is, they go down Mansion Road, and the thing is, uh, some common sense says, you know, you swing, instead of going by, go by Tucker Hill, then you hit Mansion Road, so. The thing is, it's a school board issue, but I think is, I, he, he, they were complaining to me, and I was trying to put it in the right path.
Well, just to go a little, another step further, and I'll tell you, it's been changing now, that Gostown Bus Center. My granddaughter walks a half a mile to get to the bus stop, and we notified them, cause the hill was really down on Kelsey Road, so it was better. and we notified them, 'cause the hill was right down on Kelsey Road, so it was better, but because it was a dirt road, and there wasn't a proper turnaround, they wouldn't come down Kelsey Road, so she has to when she doesn't get dropped off by her parents or picked up, has to walk home and dr- walk out.
And that's, that's a narrow road.
And it's a long walk in the snow.
Yeah.
You would think in this day and age, but, um, Goffstown's very selective on what they're doing for this town with our, our kids.
Unfortunately, fall, the same thing happens with, um, the post office.
Yeah.
They have certain criteria, they won't turn down, um, like they've made it mandatory to have cluster mailboxes at the new development here, and dirt roads, they do not deliver on, it's.
Well, I made, I made it clear that they have to talk to the school board, and the thing is, we have limited control, and I said, we had only been going thirteen, thirteen, we can't put a crosswalk there, and that, well, that's a state road.
We have to apply for that.
Right.
And then the crop, and then the lights have to be, they'll install it with, through a permit process, but they'll.
But it would be, it would have a walkway to, to get onto.
Right, but the town has to maintain it, they're, you know, after that, but.
So it's, uh, I wanna see what the school does first, and then if they don't have no solution, they may come to us, but I think it's, it's a, for a six-year-old little, uh, six-year-old child, it's a challenge.
One thing that I do notice from, uh, my children going to Goffstown was that they had crosswalk people assigned to these locations.
Down in Goffstown.
In Goffstown, and or, uh, police officers at the traffic circle at, um, Sully's, so.
So may, maybe being, instead of school, there should be, may, maybe.